I mean, there's a tip up.
Yeah, I mean, after what you've been doing those last two and three months, they're usually life to the one. They're always like that.
So.
Well, surprised it's a little bit of a life or a...
So, for what is okay. That's kind of what we can't understand.
Um, council grows. So, then, why not for all I boys? That's the best part of it. It's, instead of it else. Council grows, I think. I mean, instead of that, I mean, for trying to have some of those. So, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, goes for boys, huh? You get a lot of them with those laws. The facts are more plain than that. Yeah.
Is it open for others?
That's just it.
Should we turn on the microphones, Bear?
No. Sorry, notes got out.
Sorry. Do you want the word by the Vikings? By the Vikings?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gary, does it have any other amendments?
No amendments.
All right, do I hear any amendments to the agenda? Very good. Mayors' report. Um, thank you to everybody that, that Linsmore was in a very busy weekend this past weekend with the genealogy conference and reunions here and, goodness, there were lots of things going on. So, thank you to everybody that helps to plan all of those things. Um, also, congratulations to the Smoky Valley Vikings. We keep moving forward here, so, um, encouraging everybody to go out and see the Vikings play this Friday in a home game, uh, in Chapman. Is that right?
Yes.
All right, so, um, hey, there it is. Support our team. Um, two weeks, Bethany College will have their homecoming, um, so lots of people will be coming back for that and lots of reunions happening, so, um, there continues to be things to happen in this little place. Um, do I have any other readings in the Mayors' Council? I would just point out to you, the 29th of this month, we do have a work session. I think Cassie said she's talked to everybody and everybody said yes, so, we're proceeding and that's going to happen.
What time?
Um, yes, we do, because we're reading your remarks, so, um...
Five thirty.
Five thirty. Five thirty.
I mean, you start at six.
All right. Greg will be cooking, so I'm sure it'll be great. All right. Um, all right. Okay, so, um, no other, um, readings to call your attention to. Um, do I hear an approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jerry?
Rip?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Couldn't remember your name.
It just seemed like it's so long.
Consent agenda is approved. Um, there is, uh, to this year, I have one appointment.
And Meg's not here tonight. She had to tell her at all the games, uh, so she's there. Uh, Meg Doward is with the Marquette EMS and, but she works during the day here in American Family. So, she's here during the day and she's advised that she'd be willing to respond to calls during the day with us here in Linsmore. So, for her to do that, she has to be a member of our service, so I'm requesting Meg Doward to be appointed to the EMS volunteer service.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Meg Doward onto our volunteer service, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Gary, cutting something?
No action before, Mayor.
Is there any old business?
No.
New business, all right.
Back in April, you approved, um, the applications for, um, FLECS funding through KDOT. FLECS is the city connecting link improvement program. What that does is, uh, the state will provide assistance for state highway that run through the municipal. Um, we have Highway Four, it comes through, um, the south side of town, and then goes to McPherson Street, and then goes up north on Harrison and Cole. Um, what this application for is, um, from the south side of Main Street as it turns and out to Coronado. Um, what they will do, they will come in, do some repair work in the bad areas, and then do a surface mill and overlay. And we were, um, approved for this program, so our application got in on time and, and what we got passed forward. So, what we're looking for here is motion to approve the program request. Uh, there's a Form 1302 included, which basically, uh, states that we have the funds available or will have at that time, um, to participate in this program. So, we're just looking for the motion to approve that and move this forward.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Chris, um, I think the money that our match for, exactly, match is three thousand?
That's what came through on this one. Um, there's more money budgeted, um, because the cost, uh, cost is going to change over that period of time. I think the original, um, engineer's estimate came in and we had on forty-three thousand or forty-five thousand, um, that would be part. So, cost of inflation is going to change through that time. I mean, we're talking on almost two years now, so, um, when that gets closer, then...
And so, this is 2020?
This is 2020, correct.
State fiscal year 2020, which would be July 1st through June 30th, July 1st, 2020 to June 30th.
That's only six months away.
That is, isn't it?
It's a one-time thing, Chris?
This is a one, this is one project.
Yeah, yes. This one, can you apply for again?
Yes, these, these projects, I'm not sure how often they come available this year, but yes, we can apply for again. And this has been used for projects before, um, McPherson Street, um, this now made, um, Iplunky windows that was done through this program. It was, it was called a different program, that clean program, so, but it's basically the same thing.
We expect very quality.
This will be asphalted instead of concrete, so, um, it'll be, it'll be a good project.
Any other questions? Although, and what we are approving here is an application. Is that right?
Approving, go ahead. Approving a request for...
Program request for...
Says we will commit to, we will have the funding.
But you're not actually committing the funds.
We're not committing, um, this part. All right, um, all those in favor, this is something you will need to learn because I know we help with this program. Um, all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris, thank you, Chris. All right, Gary.
Cesco Centennial is commissioning artwork for the 150th anniversary. Uh, this is the yarn course, if that's correctly spelled, yarn course, iron cross sculpture that Brian Holsworth is working on now. Uh, in discussions with the committee, uh, we selected a site that Swenson Park, um, the park's department will provide the labor and oversee construction of a plaza in the corner as depicted, uh, in preliminary plan attached to the map. It won't look exactly like that, but it will be similar. I'm asking you, uh, Council, for permission to build such a site in that part of the park, uh, under our supervision. Material will be furnished, um, through donations that will be from the Cesco Centennial Committee. At this point, I'm not asking for any money at all, but I'm just asking for permission to locate this plaza in the park.
I would move that we grant permission, um, for the location of this artwork at this spot designated. Though, do you want...
Yes.
You have a second?
Second.
So, Gary, when something is, is put on public property, that this will be, and we assume responsibility for upkeep and locators and all of that, is that how that works?
I don't know if you have not seen or if you haven't seen the things we've posted on Facebook or seen anything yet, um, can, can you see this all right? This is a, this is not our yarn course design or Brian Holsworth's yarn course design, but it is an example of what it looks like. Uh, most of them are just a two or three feet tall. This one is ten foot tall.
Guess my question would be for you over the committee, uh, as far as the location of this, I guess, going to the trouble of having one made and, and all of the donations for the, the, these, for the, I guess, this is a very high traffic pedestrian area where people will actually be able to see it very well. I guess I'm just concerned that there won't be anyone around it to enjoy it at that location. But part of what I like about the location is that it's so visible from Main Street and Swenson, which is a low travel intersection.
Or the mayor's Christmas tree used to be, the, for you.
Yeah, we love that concept.
It's at the very, what is that, northwest corner of the park there, so it's pretty open right there, which is one of the reasons we, we talked about that, because there is already going to be some supplemental lighting, um, from the streetlights, and we also have, um, electric accessibility there if we choose to do some additional uplighting on it for added security.
So, you're just saying you can lure the street.
My license is good. It's part of park that may be underutilized at this point, but I see, actually, I see, uh, as part of our strategic planning next year, that part of the park being utilized more through performances. That's, we've talked about that area as a second performance area, and I would mind a little bit when we did the layout of the plaza.
One of the questions that came up here in staff meeting today was, was safety and durability of the yarn course itself, because, believe it or not, we do have people that like to, um, do a little vandalism and also, um, you know, someone's going to climb it sooner or later, it's not if, but it's when. And so, the question is durability and safety of, of the yarn course itself, not necessarily the plaza, but the yarn course itself.
Susan, do you want to address this with me or you want to step up or do I...
Go ahead.
It was a big topic of conversation at Cesco Centennial, uh, the committee and with Brian. Uh, it is iron, um, it is a substantial weight because it is ten foot tall. Um, it will be anchored after, um, after holy week probably is fair to say, is that right? Be permanently anchored in that spot. It is also the reason, like I said, that we, we wanted an area where there would be some good lighting and visibility rather than back among the trees. Um, and it does have a fence around it, not that a fence is going to stop anybody, nothing's going to stop anybody unless there is enough light that it, it will discourage that activity. It's going to invite climbing simply because it looks like a ladder. And people already is.
It doesn't necessarily have to look like a ladder to invite them.
That's, that's true.
Um, I guess one of the things that I would want to know is, since it is going to be technically called, you said it's going to be substantial weight made out of iron, you said it's going to be anchored down, but for me, I don't know what that means, is it going to be put in concrete? Do we need to have a structural engineer? I mean, if, if the city is going to assume liability on this once it becomes ours, in our park, what assurance do we have that when the ten people that we're talking about, they climb this ladder and it falls over, do we have some assurance from a structural engineer type person that it's okay to put this thing on?
We do not, I mean, we don't.
And it's just a concern I have that it, it will become the city's liability, and we've already discussed that, you know, that somebody's going to try and climb this maybe, will it stand up to us?
I think that's about a concern, I'm sure.
And I guess I have presumed, Susan, in my, have we talked about that being actually anchored in concrete? I mean, I know we're having concrete poured, but the base that it sits in is elevated eighteen inches, and I have presumed all along that is concrete.
I don't know that that's ever come out. Uh, Brian is well aware of the, of the issues and seems concerned about them, so we just need to visit with him, I think, to see what he's thinking and also, yeah, following your recommendation. Uh, no, that's never come out. I think we just kind of take that and, uh, okay.
Well, in my previous job, Brian has built stuff for us when I was at the office, and it was very substantial, I have a opinion about that, but he's been, yeah, he's, I questioned how it's going to be anchored, is this going to be bolted down to the concrete or is it going to be set in the concrete or...
So, Jerry, you will...
Would there be, would there be any concern with, uh, this being a, it's a symbol being big, being the government, on government property? Hate to bring it up, but, uh, just, any problems in other places?
I look at this piece as a more historical piece.
Yeah.
It, it is, has a direct link to the immigrant group that came from Sweden. Um, these defined in, um, the little town of Sumuro, where all the people came from.
Can I speak to that? This, um, monument, yeah, like you said, it's going to honor the people who came here, and so, one of the things we hope to do, um, in having this public, so now, is we hope to be able to take one of those brick paths, and, and each one is a founder's path, and your family can honor your ancestors for coming here, um, you know, building their home, living your lives here, and you will have a, a stone that says, in memory or in honor of Francis Johnson, who did X, Y, Z or whatever. So, we look at it as a, as a life tree honoring the lives of those who, who came and founded our community.
Any other comments or questions?
It's too early, but look at your diagram, um, I think there's sort of a path, one leads over to the existing sidewalk that runs along Main Street. Is there any thought of having eventually a sidewalk on your, or Swenson?
Yes, actually, there was discussion about, um, another path, but, um, you weren't there and we all went slap jaw when they quoted us from this, that was a, so, that was a real easy path to, that was a real easy path to remove. Uh, again, the, the joint paths exiting out to Swenson and Main, uh, there was also another path that took it further into the park. So, we did go to the one of those that were limiting, um, some amenities that the landscape architect had recommended, but we, we gave them a, a budget and it went unheard and the price came back at about three times the top end of our, um, budget that we asked for to respect. So, we kind of chopped away. I think it could be added to later at another time.
But then knowing we're doing a strategic, uh, yeah, strategic plan out of Swenson Park, as already in the budget, starts in next year, starts in January, and so, whoever it is that's going to do that work, I would think would might be in the...
I didn't know if that's stretch of Swenson and the park would potentially tie into the, I don't know if it's in the plan for the walking trails, but since we're doing the loop, I think that one walk could be almost concluded in the...
It's not, but the park's department, there's one that's a sidewalk on the north end, it was some time. There's a challenge because of the gas line, um, but I'm almost to a point of having that gas line located just to see how we could engineer and, and design the sidewalk and all of that. We really need, but that's separate from this one.
I know that Chief might go speak to this, that, you know, that the car show is, the numbers have increased every year. Do you see any problems, conflicting problems or issues with this location, with the car show?
I don't know. I told him I wanted to put it on top of the placebo, but it was too heavy.
Well, that will be a, I'm sure, discussion, um, as, as this looks like, whatever the strategic plan for Swenson Park is, and, um, I know in Van Hock, we talked about car show not being on, or not being on wrecks, but being on the street, being downtown, walking off the streets. I mean, there were all sorts of things that, um, it never, but it, it could, other stuff to figure out, I guess, from the, from where the person is that's going to, or, so, any other comments about the yarn course? Um, so, what we are needing is what?
Do you have a motion to, to approve, to put it there? Can we, by a second? Okay. And, and I do not have to abstain, is that correct? I'm on the committee, but I don't, what is the reverb here? Um, I'm on the committee, but I don't have a financial stake in it, so I do not have to abstain, is that correct? Or is it recommended that I abstain?
Well, defer to the city attorney. I don't think you need to abstain on that, it's not a monetary thing, I'll...
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of this motion to place this in the northwest corner of Swenson Park, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Susan and Patty and the whole committee. We will be anxious to wait in all of the further details, because we're getting closer and closer, so, um, all right, um, great.
Uh, next item is a transmission letter of understanding. Our current contract with Westside Energy expires the end of May of, uh, I have it in the narrative here, 2018, it act, it actually expires 2020. Um, the efforts to renegotiate haven't been very fruitful, um, but we also have other opportunities that we've actually taken into a couple of, of agreements already. Um, as we move forward, um, under new agreements, at the expiration of the current contract, we will need to, um, identify transmission paths, um, and that's required to Southwest Power Pool, who manages transmission, um, systems over a twelve-state area. Um, KDA can do this on our behalf, we're a member of KDA, the cost to us would be whatever the Southwest Power Pool charges them. We don't know that until, um, the end of the study, at which time that cost would then be brought to Council for approval of the dollars. Um, typically, a study doesn't exceed five thousand dollars.
But you're not asking for money?
I'm not asking for money right now, I'm just asking for, um, the authorization to sign the, uh, uh, transmission letter of understanding authorized by KDA to work on our behalf through SPP.
Want your motion to approve this?
I would move that we, um, approve the transmission letter of understanding with KDA.
Second? Second. Any other discussions in Kansas? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion, Gary's. All right. Next.
Um, next item on the agenda is, uh, Assistant, the City Administrator Job Description was part of the strategic plan, um, one of the strategic directions is to match increase in demand for municipal services with expanded governing and administrative, uh, capacity. Uh, one of the strategies under that is to create a new staff position responsible for economic development and assistant city administrator duties. Um, what you have, um, presented to you is, um, a job description for Assistant City Administrator to meet those functions.
I remember this was a session that we had at our retreat. Why do you have a motion to approve such a position?
So moved?
Second.
I have a question. While, while Bray's position is appointed year to year or you're, you're on a contract, um, that is not the case with the city assistant administrator?
It is not an appointed position, that's correct.
Any other discussion? You have a motion to approve?
I guess my only question would be, I mean, asking about a position, what we feel like the biggest value to our community this will provide, our citizens.
Remember our discussion, you remember what we talked about?
I do.
Okay. What have we talked, what have we talked about?
I do, too, but I'm just wondering if everybody has. I'm just...
Was it really wasn't there? Did we talk about that? Why, why do we want to do this?
Well, I, I thought the emphasis was on ability to have the right use, that's less than, but then to be able to focus on, on, well, economic development, however you should define economic development.
Yes.
And when we say that, we're talking about the potential of bringing in, uh, career, uh, jobs potentially to town, businesses to town, taxpayers to town, uh, your families to town, and like, so, right?
Cutting all, I think, cutting all of that, yes, taxes, parties.
Developers possibly, I mean, that's more and more challenged, too, right? So, really, this is hopefully a good investment, though, but we'll see your chart on my end.
Any other discussion?
Hey, I made a comment in a session not too long ago that, um, City Council has changed so much in the last fifteen to twenty years that our duties have, have expanded, our time dedication to serving as council has definitely increased, uh, but to, um, for those of you who aren't behind the scenes, and I'm talking to our...
but then to be able to focus on economic development, however you should define economic development. And when we say that, we're talking about the potential of bringing in career jobs potentially to town, businesses to town, taxpayers to town, your families to town.
Cutting all, I think, cutting all of that, yes, taxes part of this.
Developers possibly, I mean, that's more and more challenged too, right? So, really, this is hopefully a good investment, but we'll see your chart on my end.
Any other discussion?
Hey, I made a comment in a session not too long ago that city council has changed so much in the last 15 to 20 years that our duties have expanded. Our time dedication to serving as council has definitely increased. But to, for those of you who aren't behind the scenes, and I'm talking to our followers or listeners on the live broadcast now, our work has been extended because Greg's work is so big. And I don't think a lot of people have a grasp on just how much time Greg spends in this office and even out of this office doing work. His work as an advocate for our community to state and federal government has proved to be very valuable, but this isn't a nine-to-five job. It's just not, I think Greg would like to work nine-to-five, maybe ten-to-two. Ain't going to happen. So, I think this is a position that has been needed by the city of Lunsford for more than just a little while.
Okay. All those in favor of approving this job description and placement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have any other questions?
Yes, we do.
I move to go to exact the session to discuss a claim against the city pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception KSA 75-4319B2 for 15 minutes and to include the city attorney, chief of police, and city administrator. The open meeting will resume at 7:15.
That was a good one.
Senator.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we take the drinking glass and put it against the door.
Weird thing is, the microphones just fell off. Somebody can't really talk.
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah, we can't talk too. So, if you're watching while I come, this is what they're seeing. The back of her dress is, and you and I said, "Sorry, yourself." It's not pretty way to begin.
Talking to the UTE footballers up six here at halftime.
Here, do you know where you're going?
What? Yes. That's for you. Good reader.
Good reader.
Good reader.
Yes, one more.
I do who will.
Great.
There's an hour.
Well, should we all go stand and yell at the listeners?
Here.
Try to see that.
Good reader, the PDA. Reader, but it's real versatile and it picks up to drop locks really easily. And you can actually go in and edit and write on it. PDA files. You can hand it to you.
See, that's what sometimes I get into work and something I tell them, I know it's city of Lunsford.
Guess what?
Oh. I use Cisco. Cisco. There's another one. Cisco B something.
A4.
The password's Lunsford. And it seems to be more allowing. And password's waiting.
So, you create 599 for this?
Yeah. Years. I...
We're getting too fast of that.
There's a wedding going on there. This is my husband's sister, and her husband's mother.
That's nice.
And they're all just shivering. They're trying to look.
She's frozen.
All the bridesmaids came in and they had all their voting pretty dresses, but then they all had jean jackets on, but it was really cute. And she had, she didn't want to make it harder. She had a...
Would any of you like to know what you did 25 years ago before you had cell phones to look at?
And then she...
That would be...
She was a bridesmaid, and then her bride was that also a bridesmaid.
Yeah, this is...
Yeah, it really was. It wasn't intended to be, it's just, I thought, come to San Diego, might have been the answer.
Right. This is the photographer. He's trying to get a nice picture. I know. Looks like the dog. And we have a very non-traditional person here. His papers are flat a little bit. Oh, there they are, they're sweet. Sweet, sweet, sweet. And so, as soon as the ceremony was over, he took off his jacket and went to her. Fresh. Is Amy in there? Hey, Holly.
I'm sorry, but we need a better finger. I can't see.
Does this Amy's work? Does she do this? Because she posts a lot of these kinds of things. I wondered if it was perhaps her artwork or...
She can do.
Okay. Amy Chanson's. The privacy policy. So, it started with privacy policy. And that's not... Wait, that's not, can't do something. There you go. Certain things and, maybe, but you're not supposed to steal somebody else's. There's so much to do. Yep. No, no. I don't think so. I think you know that. I think it's something. And he said, "Sure." Okay, I'll go down and I'll come to our internal, we can go back.
Are there any others?
One of the things I want to bring up is regarding our council meeting structure. I've been approached by more than one council member about whether it be committee meetings or essentially the agendas we have are action agendas. And the question is, when do we discuss things besides just action agenda items? And so, I say that we bring it up, you know, some options are having an agenda set up where part of it's a discussion agenda, part of it's an action agenda. You know, we also have study sessions. We have work sessions, but other items of discussion, when do we have them? And I guess I'm opening that up to comments, thoughts, etc. I don't have a solution. I'm just putting it out there for discussion. I don't have a solution. I'm just putting it out there for discussion. Well, at the end of every meeting, the mayor asks, "Is there any others?" Can that not be a time to, if somebody asks another, to bring that up? Whether it's a discussion item or whatever other. I'm for one, and they talked about earlier about how much more council will be doing now than we think we'll be doing in the past. And I agree. And I was kind of one of the naysayers about changing from committees and going to this.
So was I.
However, after doing it, I mean, I think this is functioning well. But at any time, this is open to the public. This is an open meeting. If somebody wants to bring something up, we should feel free to do it here. I mean, we've got cameras. We've got, if it's a discussion item, bring it up and have some discussion about it. Also, the mayor says at the end of every one of these things, are there any more questions or comments you want to make or ask about? Is that the feeling that that's not adequate?
I would say, um, I would say the proposed answer from Rick and, or a suggestion from Rick and David, it's too late if it's already something you voted on. And I too, I mean, if there's any other, if you wanted to discuss something, for instance, it's on the, um, the agenda that's been adopted because it's a consent agenda, it's too late. Or if you've already voted on something, it's too late. I, I too, um, wasn't in favor of this, and I think it works well. But I think it's, I think that Rick and myself and David are at a very distinct advantage because we've been on council longer. We have a longer history of some of the discussions that maybe started 10 years ago or even five years ago. So we have a lot more history than Joey does or than Mark does or anybody else because we were part of those 6:30 a.m. study session agendas where these, where an agenda item was really thoroughly discussed for an hour or an hour and a half or longer, whatever it took until all of our questions were answered. And I also remember the first couple of meetings we had with the consent agenda format when we were all kind of nervous about talking, not because we weren't, not because we were doing anything wrong, but because the format was so unfamiliar to us. We weren't accustomed to asking questions in this setting. We were accustomed to presenting a recommendation from one committee to another for approval. So the format was a lot different. And I do believe that there was a lot more discussion that took place with those study sessions. Now, that being said, do I want to go back to a 6:30 a.m. meeting once a month? Would you go once a month? Right, once a month and then a council meeting once a month.
Depends on who you're with. I can answer. Yeah.
You came to all meetings. You did a 6:30 a.m. meeting that might last for 30 minutes. Then it might last for two and a half hours. And questions got asked and answered. So, you know, that's a little, yes, I like this now, but I can see where it would be much harder coming on board as a council defender now and not having that history.
I haven't been around nearly as long as the three of you. I was here during the tail end of the committees. And I think the weakness of that was half the council was on half the committees. So half the council would vet something, the other half would not have that opportunity. So we'd kind of do things twice. But, um, so that kind of troubled me a little bit. But I would say at least in my short term, and that was, I think, the discussion level, and I agree with you, that has dropped significantly on issues, whatever the issue may be, since going to this format. Now, is this problem in format or once we get here, we just want to, it's 7:30, the Chiefs game starts here pretty quick, and we want to get out of here? I don't know what the...
Or someone has a concert to go to?
That might happen. Whatever the case may be. But I just don't, I'm just stating an observation that I don't think the discussion has been as deep or as good as it was back in the same session.
But is that an issue with the way the system's set up? Or is that an issue with individuals not willing to just talk to you in open forum?
Yeah, no matter what point, if we get into this setting, it's like, well...
We also used to have people come if they had some issue. And they would come to that 6:30 meeting. And they were much more willing to sit there around the table and have discussion than that has happened here much in hours.
Is it possible to have a look ahead at what some agenda items are coming down the road? And I'm not asking for a cut and dry, written and blood kind of agenda. But if there was a look ahead at what was coming up, if I had, it might give me time to think about some questions I have about that particular thing. I mean, the documentation that we're supplied is excellent. It's good. But if you're reading that at, you know, 7:30 on Sunday evening, you're already thinking, "I don't care what week it is," and not about the questions here. So...
Yes, because actually, one of the things that we do at every staff meeting is we're looking at the agendas two months out. And I tell you, some of the dates we have right now are just blank. Some of them have some items. Now, there isn't any meat on those items yet, or some of them may have. But by and large, this is, this is what we're trying to get done on that timeline. And we can send out and say, "Here's what we're looking at," you know, "for the next two months' meetings." But just as an agenda line item without a detail. Because some of them, we don't have a detail provider. If we had the detail provider right now, we probably would put it on that agenda. But one other thing that I, I need to clarify on the consent agenda. Yes, it is, you're taking action on all of those items on a consent agenda in one motion. But if there is a particular item that you have a question on and you want to discuss it, you could actually ask to have it pulled out of the consent agenda so that we can, or you can discuss it, and then we can answer the questions as part of that discussion. And I, you know, and as I read that under the consent agenda, I understand a little bit of how you think, okay, well, we either have to prove all of it or none of it. Well, if there is a concern over an item or a couple of items, they can be specifically requested to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion. And then the rest of the consent agenda stays the same. Maybe just to clarify us on this process of now, for example, tonight's agenda, let's go back to the Cespa Centennial Committee's recommendation. I don't know how that location was drafted or, I don't know, did we have a committee or did they just come to us with a proposal? But would that have been an example that would have been on a committee meeting, the Recreation Committee meeting, to be discussed before it came to council? Or, I guess, how do we do things now that may be the same or different?
Well, I ask your question this way, is that I read in the Friday report where Gary said Cespa Centennial Committee approached him to discuss this. And then as Director of Parks, it was his job to bring it here. So, yes, perhaps it would have, the committee, because Gary would have been at a 6:30 a.m. meeting for Parks and Recreation, who had this request from the Cespa Centennial Committee, "What do you think?" And as a committee, it would have been discussed, and then the committee would have made a recommendation to the full council.
Correct. Because once it hits here, the questions I have, I didn't want, I almost felt like I was signing obstructionist with questions. And I don't know if that's because of the setting or, I don't know. I don't know what I'm saying.
Well, if I, because I may sense...
Yeah.
But if I may, yes, all of these items would have gone to a council committee for a recommendation. One of the challenges of council committee is there was even less discussion at the council level at that time. And it became, from a public perception standpoint, that the decisions have been made and it's a done deal. It's just a formality of showing up on the council table.
I definitely agree with that.
So that was one of the cons to a new meeting structure.
And I think one of the concerns was that we would be willing to have open discussion about these things in this setting. And I suppose it could be better, but I felt, I mean, I feel like we get good discussion. I mean, you had some good questions around that. So that's...
One of the things that I think we miss is that when we had committee meetings, the interaction with all of the department heads. You know, we would have two department heads per meeting or whatever it was, you know. And, yeah, you're talking about whatever, whatever the issue was, but then you kind of digress a little bit and you said, "We'll see this," they would say, "We'll see this as a part of a larger thing. This is what we're doing." And so I just always felt I knew more. I knew I understood public works. I understood what was going on more than just that one little item that we were talking about. And so it was just a, I felt like I got more information. But again, um, you know, we can ask all these people sitting out there for hours on end to debate.
Then we also, in some of the study sessions, if you just had a lot of the department heads in to the study session for them to give us updates in their particular departments. And I thought that was part of the process. Again, that we want, even the people that feel like they're getting all the information, so we brought them in to give us the information.
Because we don't have that information. You know, we, whatever the situation is, we need these people to tell us what is going on. They're, you know, they're very carefully working through their budgets, and they know what they can do and can't do and, but understanding the overall program that they're doing, I don't have the grasp of that. They have to present it to us. So it's just, when can they do that? And that if we feel really comfortable, we say we are going to be comfortable with it. Is it because it's, the Chiefs game has now started and... Ooh?
I want to correct something that Corey said, and that is the Bronco game starts.
I was going to say, I mean, that would be...
And the Chiefs are up by 14 points already.
Seriously?
No.
I mean, he's good, but he's not there.
Can I... One of the other things that, and I understand the importance of open discussion and all of that, but there are times when staff struggles to put together a topic for the study session. So I know that Greg is always open to, if there's something going on or if you had a constituent contact you about, "Hey, we want to think about maybe doing this," we can certainly invite them to that study session. And, you know, you can have discussions about all manner of topics, whether it's an upcoming thing on the, you know, on a future agenda or not. But the ideas don't always have to come from staff. It's, it's your council.
And I think that's probably a feeling that we need to stay again. Thank you for stating that. Because we are the representatives. Because, I mean, um, and like from our reason not being here tonight, I have a the...
I have that word.
Word, too. Right. So, um, so that's another thing that's really probably important is that people show up.
So...
So.
So I guess, from everybody, and everybody knows, I'm a personal, these sort of meetings didn't bother me whatsoever. I'm a good five or four, everyone anyway. But I do look at it from the standpoint that when we have those, one of the topics was that Greg had to present a lot of that information twice to those committees. And then again at council. Same thing with staff. Depending on what the agenda item was, we may talk about it in these two committees, but it also involved the other two committees. So then staff, again, had to come to another 6:30 meeting and present it again. And then again at council. And I agree that I think the public kind of had the perception that we talked about all this stuff ad nauseam for maybe two hours. And by the time it got here, it was a man, yes, no, and we're done. So I think the public kind of had the perception that everything was taking place in there. Everybody agreed in there. We just, I just made it a formality by coming here and voting yes or no.
That's not, that's not a good thing.
If we want to try and stay transparent, I think this is a good place to do it. There's nothing preventing anybody from asking any questions around the table.
I agree.
Again, we have on the agenda every two weeks, is anybody, the mayor always asks, "Anything else anybody else to discuss?" And almost to the fault, everybody says, "There goes nothing."
And because of statute, we have to meet, if we decide we're going to meet our orders later, because say we're going to meet twice a month, we have to meet twice a month. Considering like last week or a couple of weeks ago, we had a really live agenda. I think we were here for 10 minutes and we left. Now, we had a meeting that night, right? Even though it was...
It may be a night really...
It's set by ordinance.
It's set by ordinance. It used to be set by ordinance that you had one city council meeting a month. Now the ordinance has been changed that you have two. If you decide you want to just have one meeting instead of, you know, a 20-minute meeting on the second one, then you change the ordinance back and have one council meeting per month.
Well, like the work session is kind of up on the end of this month. As we were discussing it and thought, you know, we really need to revisit our strategic plan. It's been six months. We're in the middle of it here. And what are we doing? Are we, how are we making any progress? What? So that's, so that's the thing, trying to schedule a work session where everybody can come. And again, it's another evening as opposed to a regular council meeting. And I don't know how that you can put that in to a regular council meeting.
I think the scheduling, we have to do this because that would make us concentrate on that one particular item instead of starting a new meeting.
Someone needs to fix this table. I nearly broke myself.
Well, except I do, you need a different seat.
All the base is not, it's very sharp.
Okay.
That's my other.
So I guess, when I was there, I see, the one outcome of this is we will, or I will distribute what we have on future agendas in advance, so you have time to see and think about prior to showing up.
Well, that's, that's really a good thing. I mean, if we get these agendas for the meetings, I mean, I read all that stuff very, very thoroughly. And I feel like I'm ready to discuss those things from the beginning. If you don't read them, why then? It doesn't help that you do.
Well, just remember, when you talk about others, if that happens. I'd like to make a motion to, um, just not dismiss what we're going to do. A adjournment. Yes, yes. I'll go out here in a second.
Sure, sure.
Always a favor, say aye.
When you've been here for a while.
Everybody's doing it.